All right, I see the record button. We'll go ahead and get started. Thanks, everyone, for joining us tonight. Chris and I have become quick and fast friends during COVID. He has been one of the silver linings for me. Sharing stories in our backyard in the socially distant fashion that we've all kind of come so used to. Through some of those stories and laughing about different things that happened in Lafayette and how things have changed, we realize it's a little bit of oral history. And so what we're going to share with you tonight, I'm going to serve, Chris and I had been joking a little bit as we got ready for this. I'm going to serve as the host of tonight's show for the next half hour or so. And Chris is going to walk us through some great photographs that we pulled together and just some very brief anecdotal stories on each of those. Hopefully, they spark a little bit of, I remember that, or for those of you who haven't lived in Lafayette for decades, as we both have, it may be maybe some new information on what Lafayette used to look like back in 50s, 60s, and 70s. So to start off, to kind of lead it out of the gates with our local Lafayette legend, the photograph that you're looking at is an aerial photo. And our pointer with PowerPoint is not the most effective, so bear with us. If you see the main road that moves along the right-hand side from top to bottom, that is Pleasant Hill Road. And then if you see in the bottom right corner, there's a road that branches off, that is Spring Hill Road. And I grew up, as Father John mentioned, right at the top of Martino Road. Mr. Martino actually lived on our street when I was a young boy in the 70s and moved there and has obviously since passed away. Chris's home now is out in Lees Valley, which is that next main vein that heads from the right side of the photo to the left. Chris, why don't you maybe kick us off by sharing your initial observation of what Lafayette looked like?
The reason I put this one in, I was just fascinated by how many orchards were in Lafayette. And it was just amazing to me after, you know, going through Mary's photos and the phenomenal job she did. And I came across this one. And the story behind this one was Marshant, who was a big builder in Lafayette. He actually went up in an airplane to pick out lots off of Spring Hill Road, Black Hawk out that way, Black Hawk Road. And so he looked and said, look, he found a spot there. You notice that big white line right there, Ash on the left?
Okay.
So he found a spot where there were no orchards. And that was, that was the builders' game back then. There's, you know, all those builders, Brizoni, Marshant, Smith. They came to Lafayette and really put it in a new renaissance as Suburbia USA took off. And so I thought it was a great way to start. And Mr. Rossi, who I've lived next door to him for years up in Lees Valley, he owned all those orchards. And so he said it was walnuts and wide variety of fruits and vegetables. And then down towards Akalani's, which I included in there, he said that was a
So this is Akalani's being built?
Nineteen nineteen, they started in thirty-five and they finished in forty. I think Mary had this slide as well.
Okay.
But he said Akalani's was a huge tomato field. The largest tomato field in eastern Costa Costa. And so that whole thing was tomatoes. And so I thought that was a great way to start. So that was a Roosevelt WPA project. And then the Renaissance came with, you know, Pat Brown, who really led the education charge in the growth of California. And I included, you know, Akalani's, kind of the Akalani's you and I went to on the next slide.
Yeah. And I was gonna say, it doesn't look that different.
You know what's interesting is, you know, that was in Life Magazine of some.
Really?
Yeah. That design, that open corridor design is very unique. Yeah. Yeah, I think Mary talked about that. That was a big deal. But you notice that it became the design of all schools in Lafayette. Everything was outdoor, open corridor, in the valley. And that design took off across the, you know, the eastern Kennedy's, Costa Costa County.
Love it. Love it.
So, yeah, Akalani, you know, the other thing I included in there was one of Mary's pictures of the train. The train was still running then when Akalani's was finished. You know, it's how you got to the city, right? Because the lower deck of the Bay Bridge was trains. As Father John said, when he saw that slide, wouldn't we love to have those electric trains back?
Oh, my gosh.
Just a shuttle back and forth. And it became the basis for us as children because the railroad tracks were kind of a key way we got around the bay, you know, the Lafayette, Walnut Creek, Maraga area.
Just not cutting through anybody's property, you know, you got, you have a
You know what? We did that too. There were no fences back then, as you know. No fences back then.
Good. And roughly, what do you think this photo is from? Just if you're
You know, I would say that's, that's Mary does better than I. I think it's like a nineteen forty-five kind of thing, nineteen fifty.
So before young Chris Stark came into
Absolutely. Absolutely. I came in a few years after that, in nineteen fifty-eight.
Let's see again next year.
This was the other photo of Akalani's, as you, as you know and love it.
Sure, sure.
That's where you got your higher education, right?
I'm sure that there are some Akalani's grads out here. So Chris and I both went to Akalani's. I can say it didn't change much between whenever this photo was taken and the early eighties. And now I have two kids. My, both my children are students at Akalani's.
Wow. Is it any different?
There's a few adjustments, but
Is there any hot water in the old gym?
I couldn't tell.
That was an issue for us. There was, it was so old and antiquated when we, when I came through there in the seventies. But you know what? It worked fine. And I think they've done a good job rehabbing it as well. You can see Pleasant Hill Road there is just kind of a one-lady twang kind of thing.
Yeah, I want to get to that other slide you shared with me.
I love the hills in the background, not a single home on those hills.
Yeah. So you've mentioned a story about the hills. Let's hear it.
Well, Angelo was telling me, my old neighbor Angelo Rossi, he also, his brother had a furniture store downtown Lafayette. He was saying, hey, when developers came in, I basically offered them the hills for three, for free. And being a farmer, he thought the valley and the valley soil was where, hey, but for the valley, I, you need a premium dollar, right?
That's crazy.
Now you think, hold it, he had it backwards. The hills were valuable back then, right?
And you told me he sold it.
He sold, yeah, he said he gave away the hills for a buck an acre. But the other stuff was much more expensive.
Wow.
Because they were fertile soil. And there was a creek running through there, as you know, over by Buckeye Ranch, Spring Hill School. And as well as behind Akalani's. Remember that creek back there?
No, I don't remember. Oh, sure, sure. Spring were full there.
Yeah. We that irrigated all these farms and all these orchards. It's amazing, the creek system that Lafayette has. It's probably buried underground now, but we'll go through it.
All right. All right. Let's keep moving.
This is gonna be a tough one. On the next one, I mean, it's a general slide.
Yeah, tell us what we're looking at.
That's Highway twenty-four, of course, right? But the, the big Eisenhower era freeway connections throughout, the blossoming of Suburbia USA, fastest way into the city, and the demise of trains, right? And, and public transit.
And am I looking at Lafayette or excuse me, twenty-four, I'm looking to the east? So that's Diablo up on the right?
Yeah, that's Diablo up on the right. You know, another thing that amazed me about this photo was, where is Walnut Creek? It's not even there.
Yeah.
It hadn't even been born yet, really. It was still just a small ranch town out in the East Bay, you know? Probably like we look at, you know, Oakley area and out that way, right? Still ranch hands. But Lafayette was right in the start of emerging growth. And, and when this picture was taken, the Lafayette population was six thousand people.
Okay.
Six thousand people. Yeah.
And so what Lafayette was then, twenty-five thousand?
So between when this picture was taken in nineteen, I guess it was nineteen sixty-five or sixty-eight, it went from six thousand to twenty-two thousand. That's how fast in those ten years it grew. And, and, you know, it was one of those things that, that's why my parents came here, right? They were coming from Cleveland, Ohio, and they said, hey, let's go to the most expensive place that's close to the city that I could commute in, like everybody does, right? And so they bought a house on Hawthorne Drive for eighteen thousand, right?
Wow.
Wouldn't you love those prices?
Dollar an acre and eighteen thousand for a house. I think I might be actually be able to afford that.
So there's rush hour. There's rush hour on Highway twenty-four, right?
Nineteen sixty. All right.
That looks pretty good.
Yeah, that's a different time, for sure.
That looks, that's a great shot, though, isn't it?
Yeah, it's, it
They were proud of that. Look at that. I mean, just, and it was a dream. I gotta say, even when I was, started driving, it was a dream come true. There was not a car on the road.
Okay, so you
You could make it to Sacramento in, you know, half hour, forty-five minutes.
So I remember when you and I first started spending time together in the backyard during COVID, doing our socially distant, trying to maintain sanity. And you said to me, yeah, the roads right now are like back when I was a kid driving around. Because everything was shut down.
You're absolutely right. The pandemic really gave me flashbacks to the old days. But you know what? I mean, it was, it was a classic case of, you know, one car in the garage. You know, and every house had a black OI TV. But you only got one or two channels. There was no cable yet. There was nothing. And so, you know, I, I thought, okay, nineteen sixty, what goes with nineteen sixty? I would say this guy goes with nineteen sixty.
There he is.
Every night, yeah, every night. That was the only channel we got, though. That was Channel Five, KPIX. But you know what? It was great. It was great newscaster. He brought us all the current events. But again, Lafayette was booming and those builders were going to town. And
So, yeah, tell us what we're looking at here. Obviously, a ranch home.
Yeah, a classic Brizoni or Marshant, you know, Smith, classic rancher that you see today. I mean, they all have good bones. You live in one, you know, we all do. That didn't go, that thought of home knows as good here a while. I know mine was built, back to that original slide, when he built Black Hawk, Monsomar Sean. And he built Black Hawk and that rode up by you, that was a fifty-eighth ago. Just like I was in Lees Valley. You know, they were just great homes. I mean, it was, again, they were, they were using redwood siding from Mendocino, of course, right? I mean, they had the ingredients in, in the, you know, the construction there. And they were great builders. I mean, you gotta hand it to some of these builders. And they were building homes as fast as they could, as fast as they could. Ash, I gotta call out one thing that you love. See that pile of wood out in the street?
Okay.
That was a goldmine for kids. Let's face it. I mean, come on, there's scraps.
Free boards.
Oh, every fort came up. In fact, if Mrs. Brizoni is on, I have to apologize now. I really want to probably give her five bucks or so. Because we took at least five or six dollars worth of wood from each of her homes. There's no doubt about it.
The price of lumber has gone up a hundred percent since the pandemic started, so it might be more than five bucks.
But they built every fort and every coaster in Lafayette. There's no doubt about it.
Oh, that's crazy. I remember ours, so we live on Monroe Avenue now, right in downtown Lafayette. And the neighborhood was developed pretty much when the Callicock Tunnel went in, so forties, late thirties and forties. And my wife Kelly and I had just bought our first home. And you know, that sort of pit in your stomach feeling when you have your first home, when you have a mortgage and, and life just feels very real. And we had someone come out to inspect the underneath of the home, the foundation and, and the crawl space. And the guy came out and he said, well, you know, you have an old house, but the underneath is, looks like it was put together yesterday. The, the redwood that's underneath there, they, you can't get that anymore, that old growth redwood that for better or for worse was, was torn down.
Yeah, yeah.
It's crazy. All right, let's keep moving through. Oh, wow, a new shopping center, right? Tell us about this.
Well, I mean, I think everybody knows Mr. Brizoni was a visionary, right? What a great idea he came up with. It was next to the Safeway at the time. I remember him spending weeks and weeks and weeks just hauling dirt away for this new
So this is a Whole Foods, Noah's Bag, Old Sick Way.
Bacalas, everything, right? That whole development was done, I can't read the upper corner, but I think it was sixty-five or, let's see, sixty-three.
Okay.
That's in the Lafayette Sun, which I delivered as a paperboy.
Okay.
Yeah.
Bit of trivia.
But, but look at that, Seven Acre Plaza Center, twenty stores. Artist rendering. I'm not sure when he finished. If Joan was on, she would know. But, you know, let's, but that still exists today. Talk about good, great construction. How many of those have you seen bulldozed during the last ten years, right? That one is still in great shape, test of time. And was a monument, a big move in Lafayette's retail establishment and market. There's no doubt about it. All those stores that went in there. Because prior, there wasn't much to it.
And speaking of So what was in Lafayette before this big shopping center came in?
You know what? There was a Safeway next door. And you can't see it. It's that little picture down to the right. But there's Safeway up in the right-hand corner.
Yeah.
And then there was Lafayette Foods in Lafayette Square.
And that's a slide I know we have coming.
Yeah. And there was up the street, and of course Diablo Foods was coming in.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, another institution.
And Trader Joe's, there was, it was called Lewis Foods, and then it changed to Monty Foods in the sixties or something like that. So there were a few other restaurants. They were very small. They were very small. Safeway was by far the largest. And then when Lucky's and Cracker Barrel, Barrel Delicatessen moved into Mr. Brizoni's Plaza, they were by far the most modern and newest stores. And that's actually what caused Safeway to plow their zone. They bulldozed. Yep, keep up.
Good.
So speaking of the sun, there's, there's a, a I saw this. I had to put it in there. The Lafayette Sun, personal app, right? Go ahead and read it.
All right, I'm gonna read.
No, read, which one do you want to read? The Annie girl or the young unattached woman?
I'm gonna read about the swap shop.
Come on.
We're trading a nineteen thirty-seven Plymouth Business Coupe, I think it says, for a boat with an outboard motor, Lafayette Pharmacy, and it gives a street address, gives you a number to connect. You delivered this paper. Is this a daily paper? Is this a weekly paper? What is it?
It was, it was kind of a daily, daily newspaper back then. Yeah. It was great. No inserts, lightweight, so on, you know, it's easy to carry and
And how'd you get around? Are you on your bike? Are you on a horse? I mean, what's happening?
You know what? I think I had just gotten my, what were those called? Those stingrays. Were those stingrays?
Stingray?
Yeah, stingray. I think, they'll know.
Like a scooter?
People online, well, they'll know this thing, right? It was made by Schwinn. The bikes made by Schwinn out of Chicago were the big bikes. But I kind of loved, you know, like the one, young, unattached woman, intelligent, healthy, attractive, must-have husband by March fifteenth, when her lease is up. I think that's, that is genius. That is genius.
Certainly a different time, for sure.
Okay, let's move on to the pricing. Let's see. Oh, boy.
So this is Lafayette Foods.
Lafayette.
Where Lafayette Square is now.
Yeah, it was in what we call the FedEx office right now, the FedEx section of the
I don't know what happened. It appears that we lost our presenter.
Yeah, so we lost, we're back now on cellular.
Oh, okay.
So we, we are, I guess Comcast just shut down our internet, so we're gonna now try and go back to screen sharing. Hopefully, you're all, we didn't lose all of our guests, I hope.
No. So who is it that I need to make co-host?
So you can keep it as Chris Stark. And let me see. Let me think of the best way to do this. We may have to jump on our old slides.
I don't see Chris Stark as a participant.
Bear with me one moment.
They somehow got off, but we're working on it. We're fixing it. Okay.
You know, they were in a different setting. That's why I couldn't and that's what that, we lost.
Oh. I see Pam Stark, is that?
No, try
We're gonna, we're gonna reconnect to screen share through Chris's phone. We'll use cellular if you don't mind bearing with us just a minute.
Oh, okay. But I think I'll still need to make you co-host.
Yes, you will. Is it gonna be, are you joining just as yourself? It's like your phone number, what is it gonna be?
Oh, I don't know. That's a good question.
Let's find out.
Yeah.
I hope this doesn't impact our payment plan that we arranged.
While we're waiting for them to connect, I'd just like to interject. My family moved to Lafayette in nineteen fifty-seven from San Francisco. I've, we've had the family home up until this point. In nineteen ninety, we moved in with my family. And I've had a long, long life in Lafayette. And it's, it's been fascinating to see this presentation and make up a lot of memories for me.
You're very kind. So great. We're almost there. Perfect.
Technology is so wonderful when it works.
Yeah. Let's see if we can rejoin.
Be back in?
Not yet. Well, we're in, but I need to screen share.
Okay.
Will you join? Go to your email and join that link. You're now on my phone, so it should work.
Oh, sure.
And then I'll screen share. Perfect.
So who do I need to make co-host so you can share your screen?
You should come back as Chris Stark.
I don't s- oh. I see Pam Stark.
Hang on, it's about to join.
Oh, okay.
I think it should be in and I'll mute us.
Ah, there we go.
Perfect. All right.
Okay, you're the co-host, but you need to unmute yourself.
Are you able to hear me okay now?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, we're using two, we're using two computer, yeah, just to do it efficiently. So as long as you can hear us, we'll screen share.
Okay.
Be back.
Okay.
There we go. See if that catches up. All right. Pardon the interruption. We're back.
Yeah, I think the internet's going down all over Lafayette, right?
All right. And Reid, are you able to hear us okay and see a current slide?
Yes, you can. Yes. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we're
So where are we now? Keep down your cost of living.
Keep down your cost of living. You know what? It was just a sign of the times. I mean, you're dealing with a generation fresh off World War Two, right? So it was the, the origination of loyalty groups, right?
Sure.
I mean, I, I don't think people realize, okay, I'm in the Pete's Club, I'm in, you know, this club, that club. I mean, it always started years ago with green stamps and blue chips and so on. And these merchants, right? I mean, I licked, I must have licked at least five thousand books of blue chip stamps as a kid. It all depend on, depended, you know, I'm sure many of the people listening all did the same. Whether it's blue chip or, or SNH green stamps, as I recall. There was loyalty to be had. And these merchants would do that. And so you would trade in your books of stamps for credit. And it went on in all the merchants of Lafayette.
I was gonna say, I see Campana Music in here. That's one I know.
Yeah.
That's a longstanding and old business.
Yeah, that's what I love about this picture of the paper, too. Those are the old pictures of the shops. You'll see, you know, Lafayette Market in there on the left. You know, you'll, you'll see the
Sutton Shoes, I remember.
Remember Sutton Shoes?
I do. Yeah, I do. That was around. That was in my, my, my era.
Yeah. And that's, you know, I put that in there too, because that was before the big fire of, I don't know what year. I think if Mary's on, you have to, anyway, Lafayette Square and Lafayette Foods and Sutton Shoes, there was a fire there. It burned down that whole section of Lafayette Square. And so when you see Federal Express and the bike store and Monja and all that, that was, that's all new. And that's why it doesn't exactly match the original Lafayette Square.
Got it.
That burned down. All that meant was I got to go down and pick out a charter of free shoes.
They were, they were free, so it's all good. All right, let's keep moving through. We have some more to get through here.
So I thought I'd do some, you know, some current pictures everybody recognizes and some flashback of what I remembered as.
All right, so this is Campana Music.
Today.
I remember that, right? I know that from today.
Do you remember what was there before?
Well, only because I cheated and I did this with you once or twice.
Oh, okay. I'm sure they remember what was there before. It'll take just a second here. There we go. It was the Greyhound bus station.
Wow.
So the tracks came up, the buses came in, right? And that was the advent of, you know, the fifties and sixties, right? Freeways and buses were our new mode of transportation. And so you could go down to the bus depot and for a dime, you could go to Oakland, for a quarter, you could go to the city. And they turned the Bay Bridge, the lower deck was for buses and trucks, and the upper deck was for car drivers.
Got it.
So you're, so two lanes each way, right? Now it's all one way. Yeah. So you'd go down to the Greyhound bus station, get on a bus, you could go to Walnut Creek, you could go to Oakland, you could go wherever you wanted. And that was the transportation.
Well, that, well, that's crazy to think. And now who knows what Campana Music that building will be next. It's for sale, so
Yeah.
The next chapter is to be written.
You're right.
All right, so this is a scene we all know.
This is the current picture. Yeah, this is what you'll recognize.
Let's wait one minute till it catches up here on the screen. There we go.
You recognize that one.
Of course.
Everyone recognizes that one.
And then let's see. All right. Jack Hagman, tell us about, okay, so I know to the right here, I see Toyland. Seventies, that was seventies and maybe early eighties. That was Handlebar Toys.
Right. And so it was fifties and sixties, yeah. And, and it wasn't any different for you of that. Same wooden floors.
Oh, I'm sure nothing changed.
I, you know, somebody said it was an old horse stable. I don't know if that's true or not. But didn't it look like it inside?
Wow.
I mean, it was Toyland. We would go there. We loved it, right? We'd take our, our paper route money and go down there and buy it. But if you, it's too bad we can't zoom in, but in between Toyland and Jack Hagman is the original Millie's. And I think that means something to everybody.
Okay, so what I'm seeing, coffee shop here.
That's Millie's.
That was the original Mills.
Original Millie's was right there.
So when did Millie's move? Because I only know Millie's in its current, you know, loving home.
I'm too old to remember.
All right, okay.
But that was, you know, it was just a tiny, you know, you've probably been in that Italian restaurant, right?
I have.
It's been, it's cycled through several things. It, it was a postage stamp of a place. But Millie's became an icon in Lafayette.
That's great. And they still have good coffee cakes.
Yeah.
They deserve that status. All right, so let's let this
So the, the other shot I thought I'd take on was a shot of the intersection of Mount Diablo and Maraga Road, right? And that's what it looks like today. Everybody recognizes that, of course. But when I was a kid, it was used for parades, right? And we, everybody laughed. Lafayette's a one-stop, stoplight town. That was the only place there was a stoplight in Lafayette.
So Mount Diablo and Maraga.
Maraga.
Okay.
Now there's ten plus. But I think, you know, I'm looking at this now as, as you have it up there, I think that was the bow of the flags. So the two junior highs used to go to compete in sports against each other, right? And there was Fairview and there was Stanley, right? Stanley was the old
Right, I went to Stanley, yeah.
Yeah.
Where was?
Old icon. Fairview is now, I think called Burton Valley Elementary.
Oh, that's right.
Out there, off Royal Drive.
For sure, yeah.
But it was a big deal, believe it or not. It wa- so there was the Battle of the Flags for football, and there was Cage Carnival for basketball.
Okay.
So, you know what? See, that's the only reason I think is cause if you look at the cheerleaders, they have the big F, and it must have been Fairview.
Wow.
And, you know, one of our parishioners, Marie Zizer, went there. I'll bet you that's Marie, right there, marching down Maraga Road on her way to Stanley School.
All right, Marie, if you're here, put a note in the chat, please, to confirm or deny that.
And so, you know, now I go back to everyday Lafayette, right? That was it. The milk bin, you heard the clang in the morning. And there he was, dropping off the milk on your doorstep.
Love it.
Right? And, uh, that was the start of Saturdays. And Saturdays was always workday for us.
Okay.
And that meant raking.
And you were one of nine.
One of nine.
So there had to be work to spread around if there's nine kids, that's.
Well, at this, at this time in the sixties, there were only, you know, six of us or seven of us by the home. Yeah. Yeah, my parents vacated in Cleveland, and so we came here with five of us. And so she had, my mom added four more after that. But yeah, you're right, we were out there raking all these. I mean, oak trees were everywhere. We had to rake them. But it was kind of exciting because we got to light them on fire.
Absolutely.
You know, it doesn't take much to entertain a ten-year-old, right? And let them burn, and you just had to watch over them.
Oh, that's funny.
And that, and that was no different with the incinerator. I mean, I.
Right, so this is obviously a stock photo that you pulled, but you claim that there are incinerators still lying around.
They aren't, they aren't being used. You should recognize that guy. That's Wally from Be the Dealer.
Yeah, so where's this? This is?
That's off the, uh, walking trail. They're still around. They're still there. There weren't garbage men.
Yeah.
We didn't have the infrastructure, right? We flooded, suburbia USA was flooded with homes and, and young couples with large families. I mean, look at the Brazones, us, the Lees, the Johnston's, you can go down the list. Very large families, tons of garbage.
Sure.
Every day, it went back into that incinerator, and was toasted, everything. The only thing that really set me off was my mom's hairspray cans. They exploded.
Of course, yeah, you should have.
It was a little exciting. It kept you on your toes.
All right, so is this a stock photo or is this a family photo?
Uh, that's a family photo. I mean, after working all day, we'd go in the backyard.
Hold on one second, it's about to pop up. There's a little delay.
You know, that's just a family photo. Uh, my brothers and I would go in the backyard, we'd play kickball. You know, the typical, I mean, you're a dapper guy. Look at those outfits, right? It was all blue jeans, flannel shirts, but leather shoes. Everything was kind of Buster Brownish.
Okay.
You know?
Maybe from Sutton's.
You couldn't run very fast, you know, I'll tell you that. But, um, and then after that, we'd go up on the street, get our coasters out, because we lived on a hill. Hawthorne Hill was a big hill.
Yeah.
And so that lumber, that pile of lumber I talked about, that was a gold mine. We would make coasters out of that, we'd make forts out of that, and we'd watch it, wa- you know, ride them down the hill. Um, you know, we'd have one guy at the bottom of the hill, of course, saying, he'd yell, "Car", if there was a car coming.
It's an important guy to have down the hill.
Well, you know those coasters. There are no brakes, really. Not really. I mean, it was your shoes. We, that was about it, right? It was a Flint, primitive Flintstone mobile.
So I had a modern, uh, a modern version from a footwear standpoint, but nothing changed. I lived on the top of Martino. And for anybody who has been.
That's a big hill.
To Martino Road, I could burn through a new pair of vans, um, sitting on my skateboard, riding a go-kart like this down the hill once. And my shoes would get warm, and that was like a signal from my parents that I was going just a little too fast, but.
Yeah, I mean, we loved those things. We loved those things, riding those down that hill. I mean, it was, we'd put on our plastic football helmets and, and go out, right? We thought that was our safety mechanism. I mean, that's my brother, we got a modern car. Don't you think that's a little more modern? We put a horn on it.
Absolutely. I see the safety feature of the horn.
Yeah.
All right, so now we're in the water, so are you in the reservoir here or are you?
No, after all that, you just went down to the creek.
All right.
The creek was everywhere in Lafayette. We navigated the creek, the creek, you know, I know Mary talked about the Indians using creek. Listen, in the sixties, we loved that creek for a different reason. It was a great way to cool off, a great place to fish. It was a lot of.
Was the water clean?
Ish? I don't know. I didn't check it as a kid, but it must have been relatively, I guess, you know?
So in, where, where our home is now, um, we're right adjacent to Lafayette Elementary School in downtown Lafayette.
Yeah.
And so there's a creek across the street from us, um, that runs. And we had some work being done by the city in there. The gentleman who was doing the work grew up on First Street, which is now a preschool. He grew up in a little house on First Street, and he said he used to catch salmon in the creek back.
That's a true story.
Before they ran up through, I guess there's a culvert in Concord that sort of stops the salmon now, but up until that was put in in probably the seventies.
Yeah.
You could catch salmon in Lafayette. That's pretty wild.
That's true. And, and they still do out at that culvert in Concord.
God, that's crazy.
Yeah.
Crazy to think.
Yeah.
Crazy to think. All right, so we all know what this is.
Yeah, I mean, that was our backyard. Not our backyard, but it was Mr. Brazoni and Mrs. Brazoni's backyard, really. They owned the hill we lived on. And we would go up there and do everything, right? We played football, Easter egg cons, you name it. Everything went on up on that hill. And across the way, of course, is Saint Perpetua. Um, we're adjoining hills, and, uh, you know what? You know how it is. You go up there, you live on Martino. You'd go out there with your BB gun, you'd go catch lizards, you'd go catch snakes, you'd bring home whatever you could. Watch mom's screen, take it outside, let it go again, right? I mean, and there's Father John's backyard. He stares straight across at our hill.
Yeah, Brionis was my, I was fortunate to have Brionis as my backyard from age five on. And we would take off and, yeah, go out with our BB guns and our bikes and be gone for the day. That was it.
Yeah, I mean, we, you know, there was a pear orchard up there. We picked the pears every year, and, uh, we actually farmed all the orchards. There were nine kids, right? So we kind of farmed every orchard that was.
All right, so here's, here's an older photo. So give us some perspective on what are we looking at and, and from what direction?
Well, you know, this one's a tough one to see, but it's the same hill, but downtown Lafayette is on the left.
Okay.
Right? Uh, there is, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Brazoni's property on the right with the, which looks like, you know, crops or, right, grapes. I think it was actually grapes at the time. Um, and this is kind of a fifties photo. It's actually, I think Mary put it up. It's in the library. Uh, you'll see a, a giant picture of Lafayette before. This is her before view.
Sure.
And an after, current view. Um, and when I saw it, I, I thought, wow, what a great location we had on that hill. I mean, I hated going up and down that hill. But it was a great location. I could go to church one way, I could go downtown the other way. And the thing you can't see is the train tracks were our guide. The train, when I came down off that hill, I could turn right and walk to Walnut Creek. Turn left to walk downtown Lafayette, or keep going around the creek. It crossed the, it crossed the creek right at Stanley School.
Okay.
If you go back there, there's still a bridge there.
Right.
And it's, it's, and when you go down, I mean, you can see what it looks like now when the, uh.
And these tracks are all now the trail, right, that we run along?
Yes, when I was a kid, it was just dirt. There were a lot of, you know, we used to pick up the spikes. And, you know, this is what it looks like today, of course. But we'd pick up the spikes, and those railroad ties were just a gold mine for, you know.
Absolutely.
So they stacked the railroad ties. The railroad came through, tore up the tracks, stacked all the railroad ties. I think a lot of people used them for steps in their gardens, and they just left them out there. And so that, this picture here shows those railroad tracks. And so as a kid, you know, on a Saturday, when, you know, mom says just be home before dark.
Sure.
We would just go down there, walk to Walnut Creek if we wanted. Go to the Emporium Capwells, get some couple candies for a dime, and, and walk back. We had nothing else to do. And there were a couple crops along the way, you know, farmers sowing their stuff and so on. So it's kind of a stand-by-me moment.
All right, so now we're looking at Starbucks. We all know where Starbucks is on the corner and center of Lafayette.
Yeah, these are some quick before and after, or way back. It was Lafayette Pharmacy when I was a kid.
All right.
And it was a great place to hang out. My brother and I would grab some bottles, trade them in for, uh, you know, they were nickel bottle or whatever. I don't know why there were so much, but. Um, you know, we'd go to Lafayette Pharmacy, and that's what it looked like. It had a huge soda fountain counter in that front window. And we'd order a milkshake, and we'd sit there.
That's amazing.
Watching the world go by.
That's amazing.
It was a great location, great location. Um.
No offense to Starbucks, but that looks just a little bit. It looks a little bit.
You know what? Just simpler times, right? Just simpler times. And all you had to do was be back before dark.
Right.
Everything that went on in between didn't matter, right? And so we would, uh, we'd go down there and cool off during the summer with a nice milkshake. It was either that, or my mom would, uh, she'd go to Monty Foods, which is now Trader Joe's. And she would drop us off, uh, at the Lafayette Resort. And as Mary would say, you know, the dam was supposed to be a lot higher. And you know that tower is way out of water, and you can see the door up there. The water was supposed to go up to that door. And we were always told as a kid, when that dam settled, they stopped, stopped it right there.
Right.
And that the, what we call the rim trail was actually supposed to be what is now the walking trail around the reservoir.
Got it.
So that rim trail was supposed to be the waterline walking trail around the reservoir.
So share, share with everyone your little antidote that you shared about your mom going grocery shopping, and you guys would do a little, uh.
Oh, yeah, she would.
The fence.
Well, you know, Monty Foods was where Trader Joe's was, right? And the street next to it, I think, is Mountain View Drive.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah. So if you go, when we were kids and you went up to the end of that, there was a, you know, it came to a dead end. And that's basically the top of that ridge line you see in that picture was Mountain View Drive.
Got it.
And so she would say, okay, bring me back dinner, right? And we'd walk down to the reservoir and go fishing all day, right? Cause as long as we were back by dinner, right?
Love it.
Yeah, yeah. We did get caught a couple times.
It's okay.
It wasn't open yet. We did get caught a couple times. Uh, Ellen Way, come on, you're a big Ellen Way guy.
Of course, yeah. I, I have some old photos. This, I'm not in this one, but, uh, I certainly remember playing for Bay Alarm. Um, I'm trying to think of other, uh, other toy, maybe the toy store might have had a team at one point.
Oh, yeah, Toyland. I mean, everybody, Gallagher and Burke, you know, the insurance companies, I mean, all of them. But it kept every kid busy doing something, you know?
For sure.
It kept it busy doing something. And you know what was great about it was, uh, the coach, or my parents thought was great. The coach is a volunteer for that, like the Mr. Milets and them. They were great. They would come by and pick you up. It was great. Yeah, all of a sudden, nine people going in an incident. It was just like, the coaches would come by, pick you up. Granted, it probably wasn't the same, that you're in the back of a pickup or in a van or something, you know? But they would come pick you up, take you to the game, and then, of course, here's a picture of Cresco. But after the game, the coaches, we'd all meet, win or lose down at A and W.
So A and W was where Cresco is now, which is east end of Mount Diablo.
Yeah.
And I'm, so this was post-game for you, cause we, I know we, if we have time, we're gonna get in the next couple of minutes before we finish to my post-game memories. But A and W was long gone for me.
But that was the post-game. Everybody, it was nice, it was every team met there. Every team, for a little bit of flow. I like it. This is Starbucks now. Back then, it was Foster Freeze.
Yep.
As you know, um, not that it was any better, but it was actually the advent of kind of fast food, let's face it. It flooded suburbia USA.
All right, so here's, here's one. So you claim that the Jack in the Box is still the Jack in the Box. This is the same location.
Same location.
I hope anyone could dispute.
Jack isn't there. He's not gonna speak to you anymore, but I think it was just the advent of walkie-talkies, right?
Oh, that's funny.
Anyway, so yeah, Jack was a, Jack was a hit with the kids.
All right, so this is, so we know, we all know, well, let's wait for this to advance here. So we all know where the Chevron is down by Diablo Foods.
Back when I was a kid, another drive-in, drive-up.
Wow.
Drive-up was the name, and it was called Chaps. And it was just another, uh, you know, uh, kind of, I'll call it fast food, but, you know, it tasted pretty good as a kid. But that, you know, they were all over Lafayette by then. A and W, Foster Freeze, Chaps, you could go down the list, right? Way before McDonald's came in or anybody else.
Okay, so that took a second. So there's Chaps. So this was Burger's drive-thru.
Exact same motif, right? Exact same motif.
Wow.
Kind of fifties mid-modern architecture, right? But I wanted to call out our favorite spot, which was Mr. and Mrs. Lombardo's, the pioneer store. And we would go in there.
So this is Great Wall, uh, uh, Great Wall Chinese Restaurant today.
Yeah.
But go ahead, what?
So it was a, it was a small grocery store, Mr. and Mrs. Lombardo, um, parishioners. And he was a butcher. She sat up front, go in, get a candy bar. She'd take care of you, sit down, just like your mother.
Love it. Love it. All right, and this was, my understanding, we're, we're running low on time, but this was the Saturday night, or the special evening?
That was a special occasion.
Okay.
First communion.
For the Star family, this was.
Yeah, confirmation.
Where, where was?
Sambo's was, uh, right there between Bedmo and the haircut place, right?
Okay.
Sambo's. But it was, you know, it was an icon in Lafayette. I mean, and, and, uh, it was a special occasion restaurant. And we'd go there, and nine of us, you know, the big booths from under the big booths and that sort of.
I'm surprised you guys.
And where can you get dinner for a dollar eighty or eighty-five, and the next one half price? So when you have eleven people coming in, Ash, it's the owner's worst nightmare.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's gonna be a pricey for the mom and dad as well. I get it.
Uh.
All right, now this one, let's let this one advance here. And we're, we're gonna have to.
We're out of time.
We're gonna have to wrap up.
I hope, I thought he said he gave us two hours.
Well, yeah, I, we were promised a three-hour segment.
Okay, I'll be, I'll talk fast. That's, I put my kindergarten class in Lafayette School, Mrs. Johnson, oh, there may be, shouldn't say names, huh? There may be Mrs. Johnson's relatives here. She was great, though. I loved her very much. Great. Um, and Lafayette School was new at the time, right, of course, and, uh, kindergarten. I think, what else do I have here? You know what, uh? I don't know if it's working or not. Is the slideshow working?
Sure, sure.
So I, I.
This is a good one to end on. We're gonna end on this one. I remember hearing about.
Let's end on this. I don't know if you can read it. Can you read it?
So I can.
Expand it.
So you expand? I can't zoom in. So for, i- if your screen is small, um, this was somewhat of an informal report card that Chris received. And what grade would you say?
This is kindergarten.
Kindergarten. Okay, so, um, does he show an interest in science? Check. Does he easily address? Check. Is he a good leader? Check.
Do I know how to use a handkerchief?
He does know how to use a handkerchief, then most importantly, it says, uh, he needs help in jumping rope. That's in the bottom right, so apparently.
Hold it. How did I fail as a good leader and fail as a follower? Look, I failed as a follower, and I failed as a good leader. But anyway, yeah, I wasn't very coordinated. I was four years old, okay? My mom pushed us into school. We were in diapers, for God's sake.
There's, there's only so much you can expect. All right, well, thank you, everyone, for, uh, indulging us with your time, and we hope you found, uh, Chris's stories and the photos that we shared, uh, a little bit of a reminder of the old, good old days recently in Lafayette. Uh, we'll turn it over, uh, to Father John.
Oh my gosh. You know, I, we really do need another hour. Keep going. Chris, where is the picture of you and your brothers in a Saturday night bath? Five of the eight of you boys in the bathtub.
Uh, well, there's so many good ones.
Well, you know, my parents were.
I'm sorry, I need that.
Here's the other important one. This is, um, this is show and tell. It's coming up. Give it one second.
You know you're in a, in a farming ranch and community, when show and tell, uh, the guy brings his horse.
So that's a photo from Chris's yearbook, and that's a horse in the background that someone brought to show and tell. That didn't happen in the eighties, I'm honest, just to be clear.
No, no, that's the sixty show, right?
Show and tell, bringing your horse and, and its road apples to class. Oh my.
Absolutely.
This is so. Okay, so you, that, that one menu said a dollar eighty-five for a shrimp, something or other. And half price for the second. So I was so desperate to get out in like public that I went to that Baranca, uh, restaurant on, on Diablo, probably very close to where, uh, Sambo's was. I think lunch for one was over sixty dollars.
See. Lafayette's changed it.
Oh my God, I can't tell you how absolutely wonderful this was. So let's look at some of those chat statements. So, uh, Rick Cronk said, you know, you talked, you showed the garbage disposal and where you burned the garbage, he said, but it was pre-plastic for garbage.
It's a valid point.
Uh, thank you for the walk down memory lane. Great job, guys. Great job. Great fun. Miss Good Old Lafayette, that's Jennifer. Amazing presentation. Oh, that's your Elizabeth Stark. I think that's your maybe sister-in-law. Um, what a way to, when, end the day. Thank you. Great stories, great fish and chips where pizza, pizza antico is. That, and Marie's. That, and Marie Zizer says that was not me in the. Just so, let's make that perfectly clear, it was not Marie Zizer in the cheerleading line.
Noted, noted.
I would never, I would never join a cheerleading line that would have me. Let's put it that way.
Marie, you are the original cheerleader of student teachers and students. Don't say you would never join a cheerleading line. Okay, we, we may need to do a part two on this.
Yeah, yes.
Thanks, Chris and Ash.
Thank you for having us.
It's a pleasure.
It was phenomenal. So next week, Monica Chapel, who you know, if you don't know Monica, you know her column, because she has written for a long time a column on wine tasting in the local Lafayette paper. And her family, Scottos, S C O T T O S, has had a winery in the, uh, in the, uh, oh my gosh, Livermore Valley area, I bet for almost a century. And she's gonna be with us next week to talk about, you know, the joys of, of wine making and viticulture. And, uh, you know, the, well, what we all know and appreciate in the Bay Area. So again, uh, Ash and and Ash and Chris, thank you so much for entertaining us and for providing us with such a beautiful sense of the more contemporary history of Lafayette. But as I said last week, you know, the 60s, 70s and 80s were more than a decade ago, weren't they now? Great. Thanks, everybody. Have a peaceful evening and joyous memories, especially those of you who have a long history in Lafayette. God bless you all.
Good night, good day.